Bryce for the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Mayor Cormus, present for the City Council, Successor Agency, and Housing Authority.
Any members of the public that wish to dial in for public comment would dial 888-251-2949 or 215-861-0694 using this access code, 1-871143. That's 1-871143. Operator, are there any callers? And this is for public comment on any agenda item.
Yes, there are callers. If you'd like to comment, please press pound two on your telephone's keypad to enter the queue. You'll hear a notification and your line is unmuted. At that time, please insert your name and your comment.
Operator, are there any callers?
Moving to the first comment. Your line is unmuted, please go ahead.
Yes, this is anonymous. The 11:21 minutes, it's ironic that you voted on the governor's edict regarding the Brown Act because it's one of the many times that you've repeatedly violated the Brown Act. We were there, we had comments, and we were up on getting disconnected, and we were not allowed to speak.
Ms. Craft, hold on a second. Is this on an agenda? Is this on an agenda item? Is this on an agenda item?
Could you please read your agenda then? I just told you what it was about, and you keep on wasting my time. Please start my time over. Please let me know when you start my time over, thank you.
We're not starting your time over. Which item, ma'am?
You're wasting my time, and you're violating the Brown Act by interrupting because I already stated regarding the minutes and which minutes it was, and it's on the agenda.
All right, go ahead.
Now, that's a violation of the Brown Act. Notice, now you need extra time because otherwise you're violating the Brown Act even more. There's questionable media costs regarding a bunch of different things on there. And also, so the mayor needs to be censored, and you guys need to start talking up and saying things. Also, we're wondering if we ever got any comment about the BMW $9,000 thing because we see there's not enough BMW motorcycles being paid for. And there's a lot of things that are on that warrant register that are very questionable, and we need to have more information about, like, why all the towing costs for city vehicles? Is this for the stadium? What is it for? In addition, you are, you know what? This is so unfair, and the mayor does this on purpose to try to throw us off. He also violates the Brown Act when someone says they are anonymous. That is how they should be referred to. If they do not say who they are, they are not to be replied, they're not to be mentioned or any names attached to them or their voices or anything else because you don't know if you're right or not. You're just still guessing. Violation of the Brown Act, as usual, and stop interrupting us.
Still have a minute left, Ms. Craft.
Excuse me, I don't know who you're talking to, but you're exceedingly rude, unprofessional. You're misogynist, it's based on your behavior. You're unfair to the citizens. You've been harassing and attacking us for forever and creating a really unsafe and toxic environment for women in this city. We've experienced it.
Thank you. Operator, next caller?
Moving on. Caller, your line is unmuted, please go ahead.
Yes, I wish to address three agenda items. I am Ray Haller, the trustee for our family trust, which owns a house on 118th Street near UConn Avenue, District Four, Crenshaw Imperial Village, Parking Zone 11, Inglewood homeowners for over 70 years. In today's agenda, I find interesting the juxtaposition of three items, PH1 Transit Oriented Development Plan, PH2 Transportation Impact Fees, and PH3 Water Capacity Charge. Proudly, I support these items, but propose a change to the TOD and have a question about the WCC. Working in reverse order, the documentation for the water capacity charge is clear in that it will apply to new construction water customers of the city/MWD, but I am unclear as to whether it applies to customer service by Golden State Water, as is our house. I assume most of Crenshaw Imperial.
Sir, sir, the city clerk confirms this is for the public hearing. So what we're going to have to do right now is respect your comments to the agenda items that are not on the public hearing.
I misunderstood.
Okay, so what you're?
Please forgive me, and so I will stand by it.
Okay, good, because you're referring to the public hearing. Okay, thank you, sir.
Well, all right.
We'll talk to you a little later. Operator, next caller?
Caller, your line is unmuted.
Yeah, I got a question, want to make sure. I wanted to comment on DR1 and PH1. Should I wait, or is it my time?
PH1, you'll have to wait. DR1, you can comment on.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so my name is Corey Crocker. I'm a member of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I'm recording on, I'm sorry, I'm making a comment on DR1. I live in, grew up in the area, work in the area, reside in the area. I believe that this project environmental impact will, the project will impact me. The city should require the project to be built utilizing a local skilled and trained workforce, local hire and local skilled and trained workforce requirements reduce construction-related environmental impact. Got a call coming. In the recent 2020 report titled "Putting California on the High Road: A Jobs and Climate Action Plan for 2023", a California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying, and upskilling California's workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. Moreover, just this year, South Coast Air Quality Management District found that the use of local state-certified apprenticeship programs and a skilled and trained workforce with a local hire component can result in air pollution reduction. Other cities have not hesitated to apply skilled and trained workforce requirements for private developments and projects in their city. Recently, the City of Hayward in Northern California adopted skilled and trained workforce requirements into their general plan and municipal code. Local skilled and trained workforce requirements can boost economic development and mitigate transportation and greenhouse gas impacts by minimizing vehicle miles traveled. The Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters believes that the agreement as currently written for this project critically, is critically flawed. The project's exclusive negotiation agreement requires that merely 15% of the project's residential units be set aside for affordable housing. The State Surplus Land Act requires that at least 25% of the units be set aside for affordable housing. Thank you for my time.
Thank you so much. Operator, next caller?
Your line is unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, this is an anonymous call. I'm calling on behalf of a 91-year-old senior veteran who wants the Crenshaw Imperial Todd Project canceled. Canceled, canceled. This is his forever home. We do not want the Crenshaw Imperial Todd Project to go forward. I'm speaking on behalf of a 91 senior veteran, and that's his forever home.
Ma'am, which item number is this? This is, this is?
This is the environmental, the environmental, the project.
Ma'am, the reason I asked you, because this is a public hearing item, and we haven't called the public hearing yet, so you'll have to wait for the public hearing.
When is a public hearing?
It'll be coming up in a few minutes. Be coming up in a few minutes.
Like within the next 15, 20 minutes?
I hope so. I hope so.
And so then you're going to open, you're going to open up to the public?
Yes, we are.
What is your name? What is your name? What is your, huh?
Operator, next caller?
What is your name?
Operator?
What is your name?
Operator, next caller?
Operator, next caller. Next caller, please.
Caller, your line is unmuted.
Gil Matthew, District Four, Man City Council. I'm talking on some of the items about the Motorola purchase for the police. See, that's the example I'm talking about, that you should put in order what is absolutely in place for cameras for the police. Now, anyone with common sense would say have cameras for the police to protect them and the radio. I mean, what kind of thing is thinking? It doesn't make sense. Cameras should be a priority for the police department. Now, what part of that you do not understand? You try to get along with the council. You try to participate, and you don't listen. You do not listen. And then you want everybody to agree with the council and be on the same page. But you've got to learn to listen to the people and what they say. Now, there's public hearings on that, there's many of them. And I'll wait for that, too. But it's something that is wrong that you need to correct. And I'm not negative, and I'm not all this, I listen to what you're saying. You just want us to fail and all that stuff. I don't know what, you guys are adults, so what are you? Nobody wants the city to fail. I mean, I don't understand those kind of remarks. Oh, he's kind of, well, I'm good with Matthew, you know, he don't agree with nothing, and I'm so happy he agreed. Hey, that's unnecessary. And it's only two of you doing it. And then lately, the other one did it. You know, the two that you bought the council for on your donations today, that's us. See, people are watching. Anyway, I'll wait for you with the public hearing. And you guys have a good day, man, but put a check on your, on your, on your behavior. You're a city council, you're city fathers. People look up to you as representative of the city. And the point I'm making up to now, you guys have been an embarrassment.
Operator, next caller?
And I can't say much about.
At this time, there are no further callers.
We'll close public comment. Item one, CSA one and H1.
Warrant register. Second.
Madam City Clerk?
City Council, Successor Agency members, and Housing Authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Chairman Butts.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
Mayor, the next scheduled matter is a public hearing to consider multiple actions associated with the Westchester Veterans and Crenshaw Imperial Transit Oriented Development Plan and Design Guidelines.
Has the notice of the hearing been given in time, form, and manners required by law? Do you have the affidavit on file?
Notice has been given, and an affidavit is on file.
Have communications been received on the matter?
Communications have been received and passed out to the City Council.
Is there a staff report on the matter, Mr. City Manager?
There is, Mr. Mayor. Christopher Jackson, Senior, of the Economic Community Development Department will be giving the staff report.
Okay, please, Mr. Jackson.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to present this to the public. I wanted to start out with, obviously, over, give an overview over the events that have occurred in the past so that there's clarity regarding what, not only intent, but the purpose of the two TOD plans that are being considered today. Let me start by saying, we began by having a detailed discussion and analysis, looking at both the Westchester Veterans as well as the Crenshaw Imperial areas. Those two areas have transit stations around them, and as a result of that, we received a grant from Metro that allowed us, as we did with our other two transit plaza areas, the opportunity to have a plan around and have direct impact upon the new transit stops that are in the City of Inglewood. And certainly, we're excited about those. But it did present an opportunity to really look and evaluate what type of zoning was appropriate for those areas. It did present also an opportunity to consider how we could further align the metro stations with the growth that we're experiencing in the city, in addition to the impact of both affordable housing as well as housing in general, and how the city is just growing expeditiously, and...
Exponentially.
Well, yeah.
That.
I like expeditiously, but you can, I'll use your word. So, so, and part of that means that you have to rethink and reimagine. Many of you know I come from many, I worked at a number of cities, and I've seen it done well and not so well. And I have to commend this city on its forethought and its purpose, direction in terms of how land use is being modified in the city to address what's going on, not only locally but globally. So with that, one of the things that we looked at, obviously, were these two TOD plans. And as a result of our initial meeting at the Planning Commission hearing, we heard a number of residents, and we heard their concerns. And specifically, I want to thank Councilman Morales. I want to thank Councilwoman Falk, Mayor Butts, Councilman Padilla, Councilman Dotson, all of the phone calls that came in because they were all very concerned about what the public was proceeding, the TOD was going to do. And so we had individually and worked with our consultants and came up with some modifications. And so I just wanted to set the stage for that so as I kind of go through my part of the presentation, you understand kind of foundationally why we chose to go that route. So, when we look at the actions that have occurred, this, obviously, the Planning Commission considered this matter on November 3, 2021, and they took certain actions recommending to the council. So this recommendation that, this document that you're reviewing now is been endorsed by the Planning Commission as addressing many of the key goals and objectives that have been established in the city and how we're going to affect these particular areas. The Plan Commission recommended certification of the final environmental impact report. They recommended adoption of the General Plan Amendment associated with this project, the adoption of the Zoning Code Amendment associated with this project, and zone change. And then the adoption ultimately of both the Westchester Veterans as well as the Crenshaw Imperial Transit Oriented Design Plans and Guidelines. There were, as a result of some of the meeting that was held earlier, questions about how it was going to affect single-family homes, and there was a number of issues about property. So I want to clarify that. One of the questions, and really want to thank Mayor Butts for, you know, we designed some Q and A to respond to the public, to simplify it and make the public, give the public information so they understood what was and was not happening. And as a result of that, you know, I'll just run through these real quickly. One of the big questions, is the city going to take your property? No. So he's not taking any property as a result of this project. It's simply zoning modifications that are occurring to further align with the transit stations. Why was my property included in the planned area? Well, the property was included in the planned area because as part of the metro process, they look at about a one-half mile distance around every transit plaza. So as we did with our downtown station and our Fairview Heights station, we simply drew a circle around that area, and these were the properties that were going to be, we felt, and Metro felt, mostly aligned with those stations. They would be the ones most impacted by it. So that was the simple reason and rationale for making that decision for including those properties. So will the zoning change in the R1 and R2 areas? Let me start by saying that the zoning was never going to change in the R1 and R2 areas. The plan did not make any changes to that. It simply included those properties in that one-half mile area around the station. But we heard the public loud and clear, and we made a decision after consulting, after speaking with our consultant, talking about what the implications were going to be, having a discussion with Metro, that we would remove the R1 and R2 areas out of both the Westchester Veterans as well as the Crenshaw Imperial planned areas. So, most, all of the areas are multifamily zoned areas as, but mostly commercial, airport commercial, commercial zoned areas that the plan really has an impact upon. And one of the things that we identified even at the last Plan Commission meeting was the wonderful project that we see in being constructed right now in our downtown TOD, which is our Inglewood Gateway Project. That 200-plus units, the new grocery and market store is going to be coming in, the retail store coming in, as well as some of the restaurants are going to be occurring there as well. This is the type of development that's going to spawn those particular areas and again, make Inglewood the hub that it already is. Does the plan include any new rail lines other than those that exist or already under construction? No. This is just to augment those existing rail lines. The city does not make the decision regarding those particular rail lines in the metro line. So those are handled at the metro level. But as far as new rail locations, no. How will a TOD plan impact future development? Well, it sets a groundwork for future development in the plan. We call them design guidelines. It's the vision of the area, what can occur naturally over time. And understand that these plans are usually implemented over a 10- to 20-year period of time. So there's not an instantaneous change that occurs. It occurs gradually over time, and we see the city respond to what's going on, not only locally but globally. Will the inclusion of my property in the planned area affect my property taxes? No. This does not affect, have any effect whatsoever. The mayor has explained in many of the meetings how the property tax system works, and so I won't bore you with that, but the reality is no. It would not have any direct impact. Prop 13 sets forth those standards. Is the city building affordable homes in the planned area? Directly, no. Encouraging, yes, strongly encouraging. As a matter of fact, we see a number of housing projects that are occurring in and around these areas, specifically because of the new standards that have been established in the existing TOD areas, and we see that opportunity that happens as far as affordable homes are concerned. But the city itself is not building any affordable homes, but we will be supporting private development as it occurs. What public outreach and information about the TOD has the city provided? Well, we conducted a number of outreach campaigns. Unfortunately, as many of us understand, COVID-19 had a direct impact on, and there was a break, if you will. And unfortunately, that break created, you know, a disconnect. And, but there were. We had our stakeholders meeting, we had our outreach meetings, and those are laid out in a staff report as well as available through our Planning Division. And it includes multiple community meetings. There was meetings held at Benet Q, at Faithful Central Bible Church, US Veterans, to have discussions about how this plan was going to be laid out, similarly how we did with the existing two TOD plans. So why, why is the city writing that? I won't be redundant. The metro grant made an opportunity, it created an opportunity for funding where the city did not have to use its direct money to create this plan. These plans are very expensive. Some of these are hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so many cities, without the help of agencies such as Metro, which the mayor sits on Metro Board and is intimately past chair. So these organizations make it available for local municipalities to use resources that are garnished from state and county funds. So, I gave you all the pretty picture stuff. I'm going to let and turn this portion over to our planning manager, Ms. Mindy Wilcox, who will kind of dig into some of the nuts and bolts, and then will be available for questions.
Any?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. We're excited to be here today presenting this plan to you. As you know, we've worked on it for a number of years. And so just want to elaborate first to start on... And so just want to elaborate first to start a little bit on the outreach that Chris mentioned. We did conduct three stakeholder meetings to discuss the plans and three community workshops, as well as some pop-up events, pop-up outreach events in the plan areas. And shown here is the Westchester Veterans TOD plan area. Existing land uses include a large amount of industrial space, commercial space, and multifamily residential, and it comprises 379 acres. And shown here is the proposed zoning. In development of this TOD plan, some of the overarching goals were to the west of the 405, to leverage existing artist assets in the immediate area of the station to create an arts cluster. Preserve the viability of industrial uses while also expanding the opportunity for residential in appropriate areas. And then to the east of the 405, extending the mixed-use corridor zoning designation along Manchester to connect to the downtown TOD plan. And R2 areas, as was mentioned, were left unchanged. In the Crenshaw Imperial plan area, existing land uses include commercial and multifamily residential uses and comprises 103 acres. And the concept in this plan area included creating a southern gateway for the city, allowing for the option of mixed-use residential on the commercial sites, which would also incorporate significant open space, and design guidelines to ensure that the massing of new developments is sensitive to the surrounding residential uses. And then lastly, that R1 and R2 areas would be unchanged. As part of the plan, it includes newer modified zoning designations as well as modified zoning regulations. Some of the zoning code areas that the TOD plan modifies relate to building heights, building setbacks, parking regulations, the planning approval process required, and form-based development requirements, among others. In regards to heights, in Westchester Veterans, currently allowed along Manchester, which is the areas adjacent to the residential in that plan area, it's adjacent to multifamily, six stories is currently allowed on that, in those commercial zones. And as proposed, the maximum height along those corridors would be four stories. And same setback, but it brings it more in line, more compatible with the surrounding multifamily residential. And in Crenshaw Imperial, adjacent to residential uses, six stories is currently allowed. And the standards are proposed to change to allow for only five stories in the areas immediately adjacent to single family residential with an increased open space setback. And furthermore, the height allowances step up as you move away from the existing residential with a maximum of 10 stories immediately adjacent to the intersection of Crenshaw and Imperial. In regards to parking, the plan also includes modest adjustments to parking regulations that are in line with other TOD parking standards that the city has previously adopted. And as an example, for general commercial, the code currently requires one space for every 300 square feet. And that would be adjusted to one space for each 400 square feet of commercial. And for residential, the parking standards would be based on the number of bedrooms. The draft plans also include a green streets transportation concept that could help support a pedestrian-oriented multimodal environment. This concept includes transportation components such as bike infrastructure and improved pedestrian crossings, as well as bio swells for roadway drainage. The last component of the plans is implementation. The documents include steps needed to fully implement the TOD plans. And they include such actions as branding the areas with signage and streetscape improvements, considering the possibility to require inclusionary zoning for residential developments and the creation of a property owner-based improvement district for the two plan areas. There are five actions requested today of the City Council. First is certification of the EIR. And this environmental report includes mitigation and found that there were no impacts that could not be mitigated to a less insignificant level. In addition, one of the comment letters received today did comment on some components of the EIR. However, we've determined that the comments made today are identical to those made in the same commenter's October 6th letter. And those were responded to in the final EIR, in the response to comments. The second action today that we're requesting is adoption of a resolution approving a general plan amendment. This general plan amendment would amend the land use designation in the areas to TOD and would also make corresponding text changes. And additionally, the general plan amendment would modify the circulation elements to incorporate text changes related to TOD. The third requested action is introduction of a zone change, which would incorporate newer expanding or expanded zoning designations in the TOD areas. The fourth is introduction of an ordinance approving a zoning code amendment, which would make the text changes previously described to the development standards. And fifth, adoption of a resolution approving design guidelines for the TOD plan areas. And before I close, I'd like to note that we have on the line available for questions, the principal of a royal group, Phil Burns, as well as representatives from the SEQA consulting firm, Used Metis Consulting, representative from our economic consultant, and representative from our transportation consultant.
I don't think the council is going to need that, but let's like break this down simply. This is a plan that was developed with funds from a grant that Metro provided so that we could consider zoning changes to impact the viability of certain areas that were near transit lines so that people could avail themselves of other modes of transportation. That's why it has reductions in the number of parking spaces required. That's why it mentions bicycling. And so that's what this is for. There's nothing mandatory about this, is there? There is nothing in this plan that contemplates, involves, authorizes the taking of anyone's property, is there? There's nothing in here that requires anyone to put ADUs or other alternative living structures on their property, is there? This is just a contemplate a change in the zoning that will allow in the future there to be development more compatible with mass transit. Is that right? Again, there's nothing in this report that has anything to do with anyone's property taxes or any taxes whatsoever. Is that correct? Okay, and now, as I understand it, Crenshaw Imperial's been taken out of the report. Is that right?
The R1 property is in that area.
And so that means the single family residences are not even contemplated for changes in this report. All right, thank you very much. No, we won't need any more. Now what we're going to do is go to public comment. And I hope that young lady that was on before had her questions answered, but go ahead. Operator?
Moving to public comment, you may press pound two on your telephone's keypad if you wish to speak a comment. Once you've been unmuted, please state your name and your comment.
One minute.
Your line is unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, can you hear? Okay, this is Chris. I heard all that you guys said. I'm the same woman who's the advocate for a 91-year-old senior veteran who has a forever home in that area. And I understand that you took that part out. But let me just tell you one thing, all money is not good money. And so I still say I want this project canceled. Because I said you can't factor in the air and the noise. I want the Todd Project, Crenshaw Imperial project canceled, canceled, canceled. I want it documented, say I'm canceling. The person I'm representing is probably one of the oldest seniors in the area who is a veteran, forever home. His wife has, you know, has put all kinds of fruit trees in there. I can say you can't factor in the air, the noise. They're doing donuts on Imperial and Crenshaw practically every other week. When SoFi is opening, it's like the wild, wild west. They do the donuts and here come the cops. The noise, the air, the pollution. I want the Imperial-Crenshaw project canceled, canceled, canceled. I want it documented. And if it does not cancel, Jesus and the rector will have come before it starts.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, but there-
You might make myself clear.
Thank you, ma'am, there is no project. Operator, next caller?
Your line is unmuted, please go ahead.
One minute, caller?
Oftentimes stakeholders have not been informed as you stated they have. And despite your outreach stuff, stakeholders have often been handpicked. For instance, I hope the same thing doesn't happen that's happening at the Fairview Heights Apartments, is what they're trying to call it, where Link Housing and others are ignoring and disrespecting current Fairview Heights residents and co-opting the name, one of the oldest sections of Inglewood. No one, the city, the county, the developers are taking responsibility. And they should be, and it should be named something else. Now, the origins of and the ongoing lack of outreach due to COVID-19, it's been going on for before COVID-19. You should be reaching people at their homes and their mailing addresses. And you've already publicly stated that you're ignoring constituents and have blocked constituents from the city hall by security. And there's no access to info. Anyone that requests info regarding the affordable housing and other basics that's not taken into consideration. And the basics here have not been taken care of either. We don't have our streets, we don't have our sidewalks, and we've been here for a long time. We can't use these things. You're trying to make it walkable.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Craft. Operator, next caller?
Inclusion or access and apartment overload.
Operator, next caller?
No confidence vote in you.
Caller, your line is unmuted, please go ahead.
In the letter dated today from the Economic and Community Development Department, page five and table one, parking requirements for all developed areas are proposed to be reduced from current requirements, suggesting that with their proximity to the metro, retro residents and employees will need less parking. This is not supported by facts in Crenshaw Imperial Village. Just visit the east side of Crenshaw, one block north of the metro station some late evening, and you will see every street parking space consumed by residents from the multi-story, multi-unit apartments there. Clearly, residents there have not given up their cars, even on the metro, which has been there for years, is just one block away. There is some late night parking on the other side of the street. But eventually, if buildings on both sides of Crenshaw are built to the maximum and without zoning, built to the maximum with reduced parking, that means that you're going to, that those residents are going to need to park on the street more, which is counterproductive to this citywide residential permit parking program. Please do not reduce parking capacity requirements with the Transit Oriented Development Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Operator, next caller? Operator? Operator, can you hear me?
Caller, your line is unmuted.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Matthew.
Hello? Can you hear me?
I can hear you just fine.
All right, this is Gil Matthew. I'm calling from District Four. On the overlay on this Green Line Crenshaw Station, you've been dealing with this since February 2015, okay? You awarded a contract from Metro. Now, all of this time, you had meetings and who knows when, at Faithful Central Bible Church and Cuban and schools. At these workhouses, the focus discussed was issues and opportunity within the station areas. Now, fast forward, that's four years ago.
Mr. Matthew, you're at time. I'll give you 10 more seconds.
Well, I thank you for being so gracious. But this needs to be discussed some more.
All right.
All I'm asking was-
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Operator, next caller?
There are no further comments?
With that, we'll close the public comment. If there are no council comments, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for helping to clarify the report. I'd like to first just thank my residents who came out when they were confused, basically, about our communication with them. The important part here is that we need to start seeing this TOD as an improvement to our city, an opportunity to give us tools to encourage developers to do certain investments here in the city of Inglewood, which I'm very proud of. What ended up happening is that it turned the conversation into what was not going to happen. We had to ensure that the residents knew that their properties were safe, their communities were safe, which they are. We would never allow any of that to happen. But we started to forget what this does allow us to do, which we're real proud of. The west side of the 405 is going to start having the opportunity to bring in some housing sprinkled around in the area that creates a different kind of community, that would be an excellent community. And these are opportunities that start to change the city for the better. As the mayor said, along the corridors here on Manchester, the encouragement of the development, which we've always wanted. Now this is going to allow it. But one important thing that the mayor said is that, that doesn't mean it's going to happen. That just gives us these tools to be able to start those conversations and to open up these avenues for investment. And I didn't want it to seem like we were guarded in this decision. We're all for this decision. The confusion was in regards to how it was stated to the public. That, I'll say, was on our part. And now that it's been clarified in the residence, no, there's absolutely no effect on their home, no effect on their residence, no effect on their zoning. Now we can start that other conversation where we start seeing the positive part of this. And I just wanted to clarify that, Mayor, just because that changed so much back and forth.
Thank you, Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. Good presentation, Eloy, regarding those points. I just wanted to, first off, thank Mr. Jackson and Ms. Wilcox on a very comprehensive presentation, your staff report, everything's in there very good. You know, it's just that sometimes what happens, people start listening to folks that don't know, you know, what's happening. They listen to neighbors, they listen to gossip, you know? And then they get on their little social networks and they spread that misinformation. And it just keeps going and going. And we've always told folks, please, if you have an issue, you know, we're all available. Give us a call, whatever, send us an email, you know, we'll get you an answer. And so, you know, again, some folks did reach out. And we were able to talk to them to lay to rest some of that misinformation. The presentation that was done covered talking points that the mayor had brought up, working with staff to address some of these ongoing questions that we were getting. So, you know, again, this is a good thing. You know, it is, it truly is a good thing. Understand where the funds are coming from, right? You know, so I mean, we're fortunate to have this. But some people want to turn it into something negative, right? Same thing when we did, you know, I want to get off topic, you know, talking about like other, you know, SoFi and the forum and the Clippers. People try to make it turn into a, like, it's a bad thing, you know? And so I'm not into that, you know? So I just want to encourage folks, look, please, give us a call. Give us an opportunity to discuss these with you guys. But this is a good thing for Inglewood. Thank you.
Ms. Wilcox, what kind of property can you build on a lot that's zoned R2?
You can build one to two units typically.
Can you build a single family residence on an R2 lot?
Yes.
Okay, so now, so that's flexibility. So you don't have to build a single family residence, but you can. You don't have to build two units, but you can. So this is more "but you can" to allow you to build more density in areas that are considered to be near transit lines. Okay, so this is all this is. This is another, but you can do it if you want. And so we're trying to give ourselves flexibility for the future because we know housing is running out in California. And so what we're doing- because we know housing is running out in California. And so what we're doing, we're taking codes that were put together in the 1940s and the 1950s and giving ourselves flexibility for the new future that's coming. And it's just that simple. There is no project contemplated, there is no mandatory anything that you have to do, and there is no money attached to it. Is that right? Thank you. I want to move items two through eight. Madam City Clerk.
Mayor, we have to do two and three-
I move items two and three. See, that's why we have a city, wait, wait a minute, that's why we have a city clerk. See, 'cause we don't know everything. All right. So we're moving items two and three.
Yes.
All right. I'm moving two and three.
Okay.
And-
Second.
Okay, and now, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, sir. Council members Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye.
Motion, wait for the reading.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye.
Move item five.
Move item five?
Yeah. Introduction of an ordinance.
Second.
Same thing. Madam City Clerk.
Council members Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye.
Motion, wait for the reading.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye.
Move seven and eight.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye. Madam Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
Okay, just real quick to just be sure, Mayor.
Mm-hmm.
When you guys made the motion to introduce the ordinance-
Mm-hmm.
The person moving the motion for introduction is actually introducing the ordinance?
Yes, that is exactly what happened.
Yes, sir. Thank you. PH2, next scheduled matter, mayor, is a public hearing to receive public comments on the consideration to adopt a resolution amending the master fee schedule by adding transportation impact fees.
Has a notice of the hearing been given in time form and manner required by law? And do you have the affidavit on file?
Yes, Mayor. Notice has been given and an affidavit is on file.
Have any communications been received?
Yes, Mayor. Communications have been received, and they've been passed out to council.
Okay. Is there a staff report briefer than the last one?
Mayor, there is. Sharon Quake, Assistant Finance Director, will give the presentation.
Ms. Quake, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to start this presentation with an overview on the transportation impact fees and why we, the city of Inglewood, are interested in implementing them. The city of Inglewood is undergoing a historic transformation into a world-class sports and entertainment destination with a major employment center within the greater area, Los Angeles region. As Inglewood transforms into a major regional housing, employment, and activity center, the number of vehicular trips associated with new jobs, retail, entertainment, and residential opportunities is anticipated to increase. Based on historic traffic counts, traffic volumes have been increasing at the rate of 1.5% per year, and many key intersections and highway corridors already experience congestion. New development increases the number of residents, employees, and visitors that need to move around and have access to and from the city of Inglewood. The city is pursuing implementing transportation impact fees to help fund transportation infrastructure improvements that will address the increase in vehicle miles traveled in the city of Inglewood. Transportation impact fees are a type of impact fee that is charged to developers of new development projects to help support mobility improvements in the city. The intent is to have new development pay for its fair share towards funding citywide mobility projects that support the growth in employees and residents resulting from new development. Transportation impact fees offer cities a revenue stream that can be used to fund a variety of transportation improvements, which can help mitigate or offset transportation impacts. By law, these fees cannot simply go into a city's general fund, but must be specifically allocated to transportation projects. California cities have used revenues from impact fees to finance new or enhanced transit system improvements, intelligent transportation service improvements, roadway and intersection improvements, and first and last mile improvements. Do other cities have these fees? Transportation impact fees have been established for decades. In recent years, many communities throughout California are increasingly relying on transportation-specific impact fees to ensure that the costs of transportation, infrastructure, and services necessary to support new development are not borne disproportionately by existing residents, businesses, and/or property owners. The Fee Justification Study Prepared for the Transportation Impact Fee compares the proposed fees with neighboring jurisdictions such as Culver City and Santa Monica, West LA, Pasadena, as well as other cities in California such as Corona and Sacramento, to ensure the fees were reflective of the latest practices and other successful programs. MGD Consulting and DTA, formerly David Towes again Associates, completed a study to analyze the relationship between vehicle miles traveled created by new development projects and the need to implement the project list to support jobs and housing growth mobility needs. The study quantifies the fees related to new development projects based on land use to pay fair share fees towards the project list. The Nexus Study found that the proposed mobility improvement fees are directly related and roughly proportional to the impacts of new development. The project list is to be funded in part through the transportation impact fees, consists of improvements that have been identified in previous city planning efforts needed to accommodate planned growth. Who does the transportation impact fee apply to? Only new development will trigger the proposed transportation impact fees. The proposed transportation impact fees would apply to eight specific land use categories: single-family, multifamily, three commercial tiers, office, industrial, and institutional. The commercial sector was separated into three separate categories to differentiate the effect on transportation infrastructure among the various commercial businesses, and to ensure that the proposed development pays its fair share. The categories structured with Tier One have the land use with the lowest trip generations, and Tier Three have the land uses with the highest trip generations. Commercial Tier One, the lowest, includes businesses such as hair salons, furniture stores, and department stores. Commercial Two includes uses such as automobile care centers, health and fitness clubs, and apparel stores. Tier Three, the highest trips that are generated, has the land uses with trip generations, includes businesses such as quality restaurants, liquor stores, and supermarkets. For more information regarding the Transportation Impact Fee Justification Study, it's included in the staff report, and you can refer to it. If you have any further questions, or if you have any technical questions, our consultant, the DTA people, are on the phone, available for any questions.
Okay, real quick, Ms. Quakey.
Mm-hmm.
This transportation impact fee, is this borne by property owners, residential property owners in the city of Inglewood?
No.
Should we say that again?
No.
Okay. Now, is this, is this fee assessed to people that do developments that might bring greater traffic to the city of Inglewood?
To new developments.
Okay, now, is this law, is this ex post facto, or is it from this day forward that it is ushered into law by the council?
Going forward.
Okay, so, because people are gonna ask, well, what about SoFi Stadium? Well, they're built. It's gonna be for businesses that come in the future.
Correct.
I think those are all the questions that I have. Public comment, are there any persons wish to address the council on the matter? One minute. Operator.
Your line is unmuted.
I'd like to know what tier the Clippers are on since they haven't started building quite yet, but the city of Inglewood has decades overdue for affordable housing, and SB nine and SB 10 have basically said there is no single-home residential zoning. We have hundred-year-old homes in the area of Fairview Heights, and so many of us will have to do redevelopment on our homes. In addition, the maintenance has been deferred by the city for decades regarding sidewalks, streets, and has been ignoring-
This is really not on topic, Ms. Craft.
And exactly, this is on topic. It is on topic.
This is not on topic, Ms. Craft.
It is too. It is too, and it's hypocritical for society to say that you guys are available and you're not. This is a dis-.
Transportation assessments.
We have a no confidence vote for you. Exactly, and we are going to be assessed for it, and you guys keep on avoiding the truth-
No, you won't.
Which is that, yes, you have been.
No, you won't.
Eventually, we will be. If I put another house on my property-
No, you won't, ma'am.
Two on my property, that's a new development. Prove it to me. You've been saying a lot of things, SB nine, SB 10 took away residential-
Operator, next caller, please.
Your last thing that you do is not true.
There are no further comments.
Okay, then. We receive public comment. I don't think there are any council comments, I don't think. And I move item two.
Okay.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye. Madam Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
Mayor, the next scheduled matter is a public hearing to receive public comments on the consideration to adopt a resolution establishing a new water capacity charge in accordance with AB 1600, as codified by California Government Code 66000 et cetera.
Has notice of the hearing been given in time form and manners required by law? And do you have the affidavit on file?
Notice has been given and an affidavit is on file.
Have any communications been received?
No communications have been received, Mayor.
Is there a staff report on the matter?
Mr. Mayor, there is. Mike Whipple of DFA, which is in association with Stephen Bucknam and Associates, will be providing the presentation. However, I'd like to also say that this is very similar to the transportation impact fees. Instead of being, paying for future infrastructure for transportation, in this case, it would be for water. So there is no impact on current residents, or current businesses, or businesses that are currently, that have pulled building permits, or are not within the city's water jurisdiction.
So this is for future development?
Correct.
Everybody that owns the property now is good, right?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Right. I don't even know why we need a report. Go ahead, sir.
Well, thank you. And also, Ben Kerrigan is here. He's the fellow who actually did the research and put together the analysis that allowed us to justify this particular fee.
Okay.
The previous presentation was very informative and basically-
Do you want to lower the microphone, please? There you go. That way the people out there can hear you.
Yes. The previous presentation was very informative and basically covered a lot of the same concepts that I'll be covering in terms of how this type of fee is developed. It's obviously-
I know.
That this, what I want, the first thing that we want to realize is, the reason we're here today is because the city council previously, when you were considering water rate increases, directed the staff to determine if a fee would be appropriate for new development. And the result of that initiative from the council resulted in Bucknam and Associates being retained to prepare the analysis to justify the fee and to apportion the costs. The, 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 city of Inglewood is proposing a water connection and capacity fee which will mitigate the impacts of new developments to the water system. The city's proposed water capacity fee was developed through a fair and equitable approach in accordance with AB 1600 and AB 3147. The fee will be a one-time payment by the developer at the time project development occurs, which would be after a building permit is issued. Existing customers are not impacted. The water capacity fee was developed based on three components. We use the single-family residential equivalent meter, which is a standard that's adopted by the American Water Works Association, to allocate the cost between existing and proposed development of, to come up, or should say that the proportion of future developments that are required. The amount of the cost in each case was determined based on, for existing facilities, a replacement cost new, less depreciation analysis, which is the standard used for evaluations of water systems. The marginal cost component was based on the future improvements that are required, and those costs were allocated, a portion was allocated to new development. There's also a water rights component. The city has water rights. You rely on those water rights to provide water service. Approximately 50% of your source's supply is from water rights. If development does not provide additional capacity in terms of water rights, in effect, it shifts the burden of future development onto, so that others would not have that available water right. The replacement cost component was $21,177,512. The cost was allocated with, based on the apportionment to, for the capacity charge for EDU at $760.
Could I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Is this, Mr. Mayor, is this available in the packet and online?
It is, Mr. Mayor.
So, here's what I'm gonna do, sir. I will tell you that most people are not going to grasp in the flow of your presentation what these numbers mean.
Okay.
I think it's better if we just explain it like this. Whenever you add more users to a system, it requires more capacity. Whenever you add more users to a system, it hastens the time that the original system will wear out. And this fee is to anticipate and allocate fairly to people that build new things that put stress on the system. Is that correct or not?
That's it. You've said it very well.
Okay, and that's all we need to know.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, public comment. Are there any comments from the public? One minute.
Line is unmuted. Caller, your device may be on mute. Moving to the next caller in the queue.
No callers in the queue? Well, we'll close public comment. Are there any comments by the council on this matter?
None.
Hearing none? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve item two.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Dotson-
Aye.
Padilla-
Aye.
Morales-
Aye.
Fogg-
Aye.
Mayor Buds.
Aye. Madam Clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
Mayor, the next scheduled matter is a public hearing to consider approval of the draft fiscal year 2020 through 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report for submission to the United State Department of Housing and Urban Development, Los Angeles Field Office, by the December 30, 2021 deadline.
Has notice of the hearing been given in the time form and manners required by law? And do you have the affidavit on file?
Notice has been given and an affidavit is on file.
Have communications been received on this matter?
No communications have been received, Mayor.
Is there a staff report on the matter?
Mr. Mayor, there is. Mr. Roberto Chavez, the HUD Programs Manager, will give a brief presentation.
They're learning.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, members of the public. Thank you for your time and attention. Today, we're requesting that the mayor and council conduct a public hearing to consider approval of the draft fiscal year 2020, 2021 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, also referred to as the CAEPER, for submission to HUD. Today, I'm presenting the fourth cycle of the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report for the 2017 through 2021 Consolidated Plan. Just for reference, the Consolidated Plan is a five-year kind of goals for the program. This document details the accomplishments made by the city using CDBG and Home Investment Partnership Program funding. The city allocated 200, just over 283,000 in CDBG funding for the minor home repair- funding for the minor home repair program. This home rehab program benefited low-income residents in improve, proving roofing, electrical, and plumbing for their homes. Upon completion, these projects resulted in the rehabilitation of thirteen homes, with more expected to be completed during the upcoming year. About eighteen, uh, City of Inglewood residents, consisting of senior citizens, um, age sixty-two or older and permanently disabled persons, received temporary rental assistance program, also referred to as the TBRA. An additional forty displaced families received rental assistance through the homeless tenant-based rental assistance program. Uh, also noted is the, uh, Housing Rights Center provided fair housing counseling to approximately three hundred and fifty families during that year. Uh, seniors were provided meals for about a hundred and sixty-nine seniors. Uh, youth programs were offered through a scaled-down program due to the COVID pandemic. Summer camps were also provided. HUD funding resources have been, uh, stable in the recent years, and the city received additional funding through the CARES Act this year. Um, and, and we provided rental assistance, uh, with some of those funding. These programs have worked to strengthen the city and will continue to assist residents as long as funding remains strong. Uh, with that, the recommendation is that the mayor and council, uh, conduct a public hearing, um, to approve the draft fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, so we can submit the report to HUD by, uh, December thirtieth deadline. Thank you. Um, this concludes my report, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Uh, time for public comment. Operator, any callers, uh, for public comment? One minute.
Caller, your line is unmuted. Caller, your line is unmuted. Moving to the next caller. Your line is unmuted.
First of all, Brown Act violation. Operator knows that there were people that were online for the last one to make public comments, and the mayor ran, ran over it roughshod, and he could hear her saying that there are people there. We've been barred from participation in some of these things, and also for the HUD report. It would be nice if you guys would stop allowing realtors to discriminate in the City of Inglewood against potential African-American home buyers, which happens a lot. I think that should go into the report as well, and also it's as a way to help people. And that stakeholders need to be more informed, and other people need to be more informed about the good work that CDBG is doing. Um, and then also we need more assistance from CDBG as well. You need to give people more time for the last one about the water thing, since you guys did some illegal things and haven't notified people properly regarding the water issue, and then you voted on it, Mayor Butts.
So nice. All right, operator, next.
You like to find it funny. You find everything funny. It's hilarious, isn't it?
Operator, next caller, please.
Ignoring people. Ignoring people all the time.
Operator, can you hear me?
Moving to the next caller. Your line is unmuted. I know their comments.
Operator, are there any other callers?
There are no further comments.
With that, we'll close public comment. Um, are there any council comments?
Nothing.
Hearing none?
Move approval item number two.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. Consent calendar. Items two through eleven.
So move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, DR one.
Yes, Mayor, staff report recommending approval of the First Amendment and extension of amendment and restated exclusion, exclusive negotiating agreement by and between the City of Inglewood and Prairie Station LLC, providing for the extension and reinstatement of exclusive negotiations between the city and the developer as established in the amended and restated exclusive negotiating agreement dated November nineteenth, twenty nineteen.
Move approval.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, A one.
Name of Anthony Brissinger. As to that, there is a request or motion for settlement.
So move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
If stain, I was not there.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. A two.
And no, uh, oral reports from the city attorney's office.
Thank you, sir. CM one.
No oral report, sir.
CAC one.
Uh, staff report recommending adoption of a resolution reciting the facts and, I'm sorry, reciting the fact of the special municipal election held on November second, twenty twenty-one, declaring the results and other matters as required by law.
So move.
Second.
Madam City Clerk.
Council members Dodson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Falk.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye, CC two.
No reports, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. No appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Public comments on other matters not covered on the agenda or in the public hearings but related to city business. One minute. Operator, are there any callers?
Moving to the first caller. Your line is unmuted.
The continued condescending, derisive, and disrespectful comments by Mayor Butts and Alex Padilla, who apparently thrive on inflicting chaos and suffering on people, must stop. Numerous complaints have been made and submitted to the city manager for years, and still there's no response. Chief Frantara is refusing to provide info, meet, address, and resolve, um, uh, civic and apparently criminal violations from the IPD and the stalking of women by drones in their own backyard. You can't accept funds, uh, federal funds or anything if you're violating titles two, three, and six, and more. Mayor Judge, Mayor James T. Butts and Councilperson Alex Padilla obviously think it's funny to not deal with constituents. I'm paying taxes and fees and not receiving services appropriately or at all. There's been no information, wild goose chases, and lies from administration violating ethics, professionalism, and more. They've continued this behavior throughout their reign of terror, and it is unfair, especially to have misogynist, um, behavior going on in City Hall, which is an EEOC violation, as well as towards residents, and more.
Thank you, Ms. Craft. Operator, next caller.
Again, again, he's trying to violate the Biden Act.
Operator, next caller, please.
That's you.
Your line is unmuted.
Uh, yes, this is Ray Holler, family homeowner in Crenshaw Imperial Village for over seventy years. Uh, you know, regarding outreach of the, regarding the, uh, TOD, the only notice I got by mail anyway was a letter postmarked two weeks ago for today's meeting. And our house is one block from Benacue. I would have liked to have attended the outreach meeting there and try to get, you know, more time with the, with the, with the, with the, like, the lower level, which is for that and not, you know, bother this forum. Secondly, yes, I had a short question about the water capacity charge, and somehow I got stuffed. You know, I, I did hit pound two, and I never, never got, was never able to get through. So indeed, yes, there, at least I was one who wanted to make a question about the water capacity charge. I just want to know if that applies to customer service, not by the city and, and, uh, the WMD, but by Golden State Water, uh, customers like in, down in Crenshaw Imperial Village, which sort of ties into the TOD, which the, which both of the fees did, because those fees, the, the water and the traffic, those increase capacity, but all the TOD seeks to reduce parking cap, capacity, and I think that's the wrong direction to go. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Operator, next caller.
At this time, there are no further questions or comments.
Comment, we'll go to, um, Mayor Council remarks. Councilman Dodson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, District One is having its Christmas giveaway on Saturday, December eleventh, twenty twenty-one. This Saturday, the eleventh, I will be having an annual District One Christmas giveaway. I want to invite everyone to come out to Candy Can Lane to see Santa and his sleigh. Give away candy stockings as long as they last. It is a drive-through community center. So if you'd like to come, you can drive your car through. We will give you gifts if your kids are registered. If not, you can give us gifts. But there'll be no fraternizing outside of your car, except for the kids going to take a picture with Santa. Okay, um, there's one thing that I'm gonna try to get through this, so forgive me. I would like to ask the mayor to close today's meeting in honor of my beautiful daughter-in-law, Anna Dodson. She was a wonderful daughter, wife, mother, grandmother, and the mother of IPD Officer Adrian Dodson. Her loving presence will forever be missed. She passed away Monday, November the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, Councilman Dodson, sincere condolences to you and the family.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. So, um, there's a picture of, of beautiful Anna right there. Rest in peace. Uh, I just wanted to, uh, you know, invite everybody. We're, I think most of us are having annual Christmas celebration holiday toy collections, and then we're handing them out to, uh, pre-designated families, uh, and organizations, uh, here in, in and around Inglewood, uh, that we're able to bless. That we're able to bless. So, uh, again, if you can attend and come out and donate toys for any of our, our, our drives, that would be greatly appreciated. I'm actually also, besides doing toys, I'm doing canned food. So if you have any canned food you'd like to donate, please come by this Saturday, my District Two Community Center, from ten o'clock till two o'clock. Uh, and then we will be, uh, afterwards, uh, blessing the families and organizations with what we collect. So, uh, again, thank you so much for doing that. If you live in District Two and you're decorating your house, the front of the house, the Christmas lights, please enter our decorating contest for District Two, uh, homes. Uh, so if you're interested, please call my office at three, one, zero, four, one, two, eight, six, zero, one. Uh, we're gonna be doing the judging just a few days before, uh, Christmas, so, uh, please do it, and we have some gift certificates for the, uh, for the top three winners. Uh, a reminder to everybody out there, because we always get calls and people get upset. You know, I didn't, nobody told us City Hall is gonna be closed during the holidays, and, you know, I'm supposed to be here for this or that. So just so you know, and, you know, on the, uh, the last day it's open is December seventeenth, uh, Friday, and then we're closed for two weeks. We've been doing this for years. It shouldn't be a surprise, but I know folks are still gonna call us and say they were blindsided because they didn't know that City Hall was gonna close. So, uh, just, uh, beware. So get your stuff in, get it ready to go. Great presentations today, a lot of good information. I want to thank all the staff, uh, you know, Roberto.
That's right.
Uh, great job on the housing end of it, everything that, that's coming out of the department with the CDBG, all these things that help our homeowners, uh, rent and all that, all that. I mean, a lot of stuff, the TOD presentations, all that stuff. Fabulous stuff that we're doing here in the City of Inglewood. So thank everybody for that. Uh, Mayor, I'd also, I'd like to ask you to close in the memory of a dear friend of ours, um, uh, Hank Harris, who passed away two days ago. Uh, very involved in the community, and, um, our thoughts and prayers to his wife Helen and their family. Thank you.
Definitely. Uh, Councilman Falk, District Four.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I want to wish my sincere condolences to Councilmember Dodson for the loss of his daughter-in-law, Anna Dodson. Um, we are with you, and, um, we support you in everything you do. If you need us, please let us know. I know this is a very difficult time for your family. Um, I want to let District Four residents know that, um, we are having our, um, uh, holiday ton, uh, donation drive, and that will be happening this Friday, December tenth, from four to seven PM. This is a COVID-nineteen-friendly, uh, drive-through event. We're gonna ask all of our District Four residents to drop off in their car, and, um, we are welcoming unwrapped toys, grocery gift cards, retail gift cards, and also toiletry items. We are planning to, uh, distribute some of the toiletry items to some of our homeless residents on the street, so, um, we will be doing a drive for them as well. So if you feel it in your heart, in your spirit, to come on by on Friday and drive through, drop off some items, it would be greatly appreciated. And we will be blessing, uh, the families, the recipients of those items on Saturday. I also have a little bit of good news I wanted to share with you that, um, I've been getting a lot of calls, and I've noticed myself, the one oh five freeway at Prairie Off-Ramp has, um, grown, and we've actually been collecting a lot of trash over there. And so, um, we have been working with our, our Caltrans Department, District Seven, representatives over there. And of course, I want to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Butts, because I will try as a council member to do as much as I can, but sometimes I have to call in the big guns, and that's Mayor Butts, and he is always so helpful. So I want our District Four residents to see that that area has been cleaned out. It's unfortunate, there's been a lot of debris that's been going into the zone of traffic, and it's been quite hazardous, could cause, um, some, um, some traffic congestion as well as, um, ca, car crashes. So we've cleaned out that area. This is what it looks like now, and we're continuing to work with Caltrans to keep, keep this area clear for our District Four residents, our City of Inglewood residents exiting off of one oh five at Prairie. So that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Morales, District Three.
Thank you. And just to continue that, you know, no, no reflect, as a matter of fact, our Public Works Department goes over and above what they can do most of the time by the freeways, and I know that Caltrans, uh, gives us our limits, so, uh, I share kind of the frustration of the four oh five freeway, and over the years, you know, we've had to work with them as well, so that's good. And, uh, you know, it's a big lift for, for Councilman Falk. Um, that being said, I do want to, uh, also give my condolences, Councilman Dodson. You know, I spoke to you last week, about twenty years ago, I think I met your son for the first time. We were handing out gifts over at, uh, North Park, where it used to be inside of Hollywood Park, where they used to loan it to us, and that's where I think I met your entire family. Um, so I know that, uh, the loss is great, and, uh, that was just another example of how much your, your family is a part of the City of Inglewood. So on our behalf, please, uh, accept our condolences, and we're here for you. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Okay, real quick, we had, um, a couple of public comments by email, and, and it's typical of these same two people, I won't even mention their names. And their comment was, was the, um, traffic impact fee going to be applied retroactively to SoFi and to, um, the Intua Dome? No, it's not, and it's not gonna be applied retroactively to the form from nineteen sixty-seven or Hollywood Racetrack for seventy-five years either, because in this country, you can't pass ex post facto laws. You can't pass a law today and say, now it applies back to the beginning of time. So, but I, there are people that will do this, because for some reason, they want to generate animus to entities that have invested billions of dollars to be here. Now, we're pretty smart here in City Hall, and we're working every day to position the city so that there's a minimal impact on the residents that are here to pay the bills of prosperity. And that's why this traffic impact fee was come up with. That's why the water. That's why the water fee was come up with, to charge people that are coming into the city now. So if anybody comes to you and says, yeah, but they didn't charge you Intuit Dome or SoFi, it's because you can't make ex post facto laws. And I want to tell you that, um, my heart is broken for Councilman Dodson. His daughter-in-law was only in her 50s. Just a vibrant, lovely person. And, and we're here for you, George. Here for Ida, here for her son, Adrian. And with that, we'll close the meeting in the honor of Adrian Dodson and in the honor of Hank Harris, who was like an anchor person in the city of Inglewood. He was in District One... Excuse me, District Two. And, yeah, I'm sorry about that. I live in District One. He is in District Two, and he was at, uh, every block party. He was, he was always active, uh, in civic affairs. And I give my condolences to his wife Helen and her family. And we're adjourned.